We're going to call to order the special called meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Venus Independent School District on August 4th, 2025 at 6:06 PM. And we do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and pledge. Joe?
Gracious Holy Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, with thankful hearts. Lord, we give you thanks for all the blessings that you send our way each and every day, Lord. Lord, we pray for you to be with us tonight. Lord, as we, uh, we celebrate the sale of these bonds, Lord, that, uh, we can continue to improve the school district for the, for the kids and the parents. Lord, just, uh, give us wisdom in everything that we do. Lord, we ask for your blessings on this community, this kids, these kids, these parents. Lord, forgive us when we failed you. In Christ's name we ask. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome all of our guests here tonight. And anybody sign up? No? We'll go to item number five. Consider approval of an order authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of Venus Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2025, levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of the bonds and approving other matters incident and related thereto. Uh, Mr. Aguilera? Eric?
This part is more entertaining.
We'll get him into the board. Eric Maha with Hilltop. Tonight, we have hot off the press, uh, results from this morning's bond pricing, bond sale, um, here for board consideration this evening. And I know this process was started some time ago and tonight's, uh, one, one important step in the, in the next phase. And so, uh, we wanted to summarize the board on the results this morning. And keep in mind that the results from this morning have been drafted by the district's bond attorney, Mr. Aguilera, um, into the bond order that's before the board this evening. So we'll jump right in. I know, I will say that, you know, Mr. Gatewood and Ms. Page did an excellent job just throughout this process. There, there are a lot of things that must be done, a lot of information that must be gathered, uh, rating calls, calls with attorneys and things like that to get to this point. And then even observing the pricing this morning, I think, um, the underwriters knew that the district was watching and this was important to the district. And y'all, you'll, we'll see that, uh, there were good, good results this morning, so. Page two, just a snapshot of some of the, um, players in the process. Given the size of the transaction, it was suggested to implement three underwriting firms, three different firms to help sell the bonds this morning. UMB Bank was the lead underwriter and then, uh, BOK and Oppenheimer were your two co-managers. So in total, there were three underwriting firms that went out and started making calls to investors this morning, trying to sell the bonds, taking orders to see if they could generate, uh, demand for the bonds. The district was rating. We have a copy of the rating report in the very back of the presentation prior to the process. The district's bond rating was affirmed at A, uh, so there's no change to the district's bond rating. But we also have a triple A bond rating through the state of Texas Permanent School Fund Guarantee, which is good. As an investor, we saw a lot of demand because of that triple A rating. Investors know, you know, if the school district were not to repay the bonds, the state has a backing on the bonds, which is good. So that, that was in place. So that's a triple A. Page three, um, some of the key figures related to the bond sale. The final principal amount or par amount that the district will repay the interest on came in at seventy-five point nine seven five million. And the way that works is the bond sold at a premium. So some of the investors paid, you know, one oh one cents on the dollar. We can take those premium dollars, pay all the financing costs. And at the end of the day, the really important number here on page three, uh, the district will receive, uh, seventy-six million to the construction or project fund. And we have that scheduled to occur on August 26th, um, that the funds will be delivered to the district. And y'all are certainly able to earn interest on those funds, uh, up to certain amounts. So that's good. You know, given the current interest rate environment, a lot of districts now are able to earn quite a bit of interest on those project dollars as you spend them for construction. And so that's scheduled to occur August 26th. I know after tonight's board meeting, um, Roberto will be sending the documents to the Attorney General and he'll probably talk more a little bit about that process. But the funds will be delivered on that date. You'll notice also, we have a first interest payment date of August 28th. And the reason for that is that's somewhat unique, um, Senate Bill Four, um, with the recent legislation down out of Austin. Um, there's a hard deadline on nine one twenty-five. Any bonds that are issued prior to nine one twenty-five are eligible for some state funding. And so we wanted to make sure that we got in before that nine one date. Some say you must just close by nine one, but we wanted to be ultra sure by having a payment by nine one. That way the state recognizes that, A, these bonds are outstanding and B, we made a payment on the bond already. So that way it would set Venus up for, for receiving that state funding starting next year. And that's new legislation. Um, when the state increased the homestead exemption from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand, um, they're offering more hold harmless money to districts to make up that loss in revenue. And so this will help you all qualify for that. And, and really another important, uh, point on the bonds, page three, the, the final effective rate came in at a four point nine two percent. And early on, we were always estimating around five percent. So coming in under five percent is, is good to see this morning. The next few pages, just more, um, figures on the bonds. Uh, page four gives a little more detail on the funds coming in. Like I said, the district will receive seventy-five point nine seven five million plus three point five four six million in that premium dollars. And we use those dollars to, to, uh, fund the project fund at seventy-six million. And then we also have some capitalized interest. This is some money that will be available for the district to use in the next couple of years to help make the interest payments, um, in the first few years. Okay? So we have two point eight million of that and then the financing cost, um, but all in seventy-six million to the project fund. And that's in line with what the voters approved. Page five, this really is a lot of the nuts and bolts that the, each bond sells at a different interest rate and they're broken into five thousand increments. And so, um, I think throughout the morning, we had, Ms. Page was, I know, observing very closely, we had over forty accounts, I believe. So that's a lot of accounts. So forty different investors placed orders for the bonds. Like I said, they're broken in those five thousand increments. Some investors put orders for, you know, twenty million, a, a large block size. And just depending on, um, how many of those, uh, investors would like to buy. Uh, the, the yields range from two point eight, two percent up to four point eight eight. The yields range from two point eight two percent up to four point eight eight. And then once you boil it all together, we we come back to that four point nine two percent. That's really the key interest rate, the effective rate, once all is said and done. The district would have the ability to refinance or to pay bonds early, starting in ten years. That's pretty common in our market. So in two thousand thirty-five, the the district could refinance or refund those bonds for savings, depending on interest rates at the time, or pay them off with cash. It's very rare that you see bonds paid all the way to their two thousand fifty-five maturity in this case. So page six, those are the, these are the bond payments year to year. You can see that capitalized interest in the first few years will be available to help offset some of those interest payments. And then the principal starts paying in two thousand thirty. And this really is tailored around the district's existing bonds. We wanted to take it make, you know, take into account the existing bond payments before the new bond payments were to start occurring. The next few pages, just some information on interest rates in general. Page seven, MMD, that's one of the indices we follow in the municipal bond market. This goes back the last year and a half or so, and just you can see how rates have, we've had a slow trend upward. We saw some disruption earlier this year with a lot of the trade discussions that impacted our markets. You can see the the jagged lines about April timeframe. And we've stabilized off since then, but we've had a little dip even in the last couple of weeks here, which was nice to have right before this bond sale. Page eight, just another sample. This, we tried to highlight some of the key events going back. This, we started tracking this after kind of the two thousand twenty COVID period, just some of the events that impacted the market in terms of interest rates over time. We thought that was interesting to include. Page nine, another interest rate chart. This goes back twenty years, just to see historically speaking where we're at in terms of interest rates in the municipal bond market. So about average in terms of the twenty-year average, going back to two thousand five on page nine. And then page ten is really one of the key slides we wanted to show this evening. This is taken directly from the pricing this morning. We had the ability to watch as the investors placed orders to buy the bonds this morning. And page ten, it might be a little hard to read, but in each year where we had bonds available to purchase, you'll see a black line. And anytime the blue or the red is above the black line, that means we had more orders than bonds available, which is good, because you always want to have more demand. And that helps push the interest rate lower, because we're able to, the underwriters were actually able to lower some of the rates this morning, point oh three to point oh six percent, based on this good order flow, since there are so many orders. Some of the investors, once the rates were lowered, they decided, well, no, that's too low for me, which is good for the district. They they decided not to purchase, and but you always had some that stepped in and bought those bonds. So overall, towards the middle, there's four, there were four hundred and sixty-one million in orders for the seventy-five, seventy-six million available. So a very good demand this morning. And then on the right, we have a quick snapshot, bottom right, on some of the the accounts. For example, Old Archer Capital Management, not too familiar with them, but they put an order in for forty-seven million of the of the bonds. So very good order flow, and it was a good day this morning. Page eleven, this goes back to some of the planning models we put together prior to the election, even when we were planning. And just we just wanted to confirm that based on the interest rates, the property values, assumptions, all in, really, the key is the far right column, column P. We want to maintain that fifty cent tax rate that was indicated to voters. And so the next few years, we have some some of that capitalized interest money available, depending on if values come in higher or lower than anticipated. The district will have that capitalized interest money to help keep that tax rate at fifty cents or so. And then once some of the the existing bond payments start to drop in the future, then there's future capacity for the district at that time. And then finally, the the last few pages, we included a copy of the the bond rating report from Standard and Poor's. I won't go through that, but that's just there for your reading. That that's a third-party independent credit evaluation of the district that we have there. And so the investors had access to that report, along with some of the other information this morning. So that's really the end of the packet we have prepared. If there's any questions on, I know it's a lot of numbers, but like I said, we have this closing scheduled in a couple of weeks here, and the funds will be delivered to the district on that date.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Gatewood, Umberto Aguilera with Escobien Pondock, serving as the district's bond counsel. Before the board this evening is the order authorizing the issuance of the bonds. And we've essentially incorporated the financial terms that Eric just presented to the board. You know, if the board so chooses to move forward, it's appropriate to approve a a motion adopting the order. And then from there, we will take a transcript of documents that evidences the the sale and the authority of the district to issue the bonds to the Attorney General's office. We'll get their their review, address any issues that they may have. And then again, that closing date, August 26th, right, is when we anticipate the the actual funds into the the district's account. But wanted to address any questions the board may have regarding the the legal process or or the order that's before the board this evening.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, a move that the order authorizing the issuance of the Venus Independent School District bonds be approved as presented.
A motion by Amber. Do we have a second? Second by Joe. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are not going to go into executive session. So we'll go to item number seven, reconvene. We don't need to do that either. Go to item eight, consider approval of asthma four one one and district physician partner.
Yes, ma'am. This is what our district nurse, Nurse Summers, presented our last board meeting regarding the over counter medication and also the asthma medication for emergency purposes delivered to students. She did brief it, but you do have to vote on it, ma'am.
Did anybody have any questions on that? No? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the asthma four one one and district physician partner.
Motion by Amber. Do we have a second? Second by Donald. All in favor? Motion carries. Go to item number eight, adjourn at six twenty-one PM.
Yes. Yes. So we will adjourn at six twenty-three PM.
I am going to make one exception to that. I could actually hear him.
Donald?
No, I'm fucked. Red. Even when you didn't turn his speaker on.
Yeah.
Because everybody else had theirs on too. I would turn mine on and
Yours doesn't have a red button.
Just get passed over.
Oh, it does. No, it doesn't.
Oh, it's because there's tape on it, because y'all gave me the
Maybe that's why nobody ever acknowledges me when I put